Good evening and welcome to the Board of Douglas County Commissioners Special Work Session. We are so thankful and grateful that you're all here this evening. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, everyone. And I'd just like to make a few comments to start with, and I really want to thank everyone, especially our committee members that we're going to be hearing from tonight, and what you have already done in your own way, some small, but mostly very large. And it's really, what we see is bringing light to help heal the community that we all know has been challenged during one of the most heartbreaking times in the history of our county, the May 7th STEM school shooting. But we want to make sure you know that we, the Board, will make it very clear, this work session is not about us. This session is not focused on our thoughts or our opinions of we, the Board, or of us as individual commissioners. This is our day to listen, to listen to those for the past month who have worked to assemble a list of funding recommendations for two specific committees, Physical Security and Protection of Schools, and the Mental Health and Social and Emotional Initiatives Programs and Services. We thank you and look forward to hearing the outcome of your collective efforts on behalf of all children, teachers, and school staff in Douglas County. And please understand that tonight is the first of many posted meetings that we're going to be having regarding school safety and mental health recommendations and the beginning of the next steps. As we're hearing the funding recommendations for the first time, we, the Board, tonight, we will not be commenting on the content, nor will we seek public comment on the recommendations that we receive this evening. All presentations you will hear and see this evening will be posted on our website following tonight's special work session, and a link to the live streaming of this meeting will also be posted at the conclusion of tonight's work session. At this time, I would like to recognize some very special guests who we have here this evening: John and Maria Castillo, and the parents of Kendrick Castillo, and many family members of the injured victims. We are inspired to work even harder to make a difference in your honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Partridge. On May 28th, with the encouragement of a diverse number of stakeholders in this community, the Board held a public hearing and adopted three resolutions. The first was to approve a supplement to the 2019 adopted budget in the amount of $13,331,250. The other two resolutions were to create committees focused on school safety and mental health services for students in all Douglas County schools. Inspired by the belief that something more must be done to address these senseless acts of violence, we re-appropriated $13.3 million of unassigned fund balance in the county's budget for three distinct purposes. First of all, there were $3 million that were set aside for ongoing funds for school resource officers with schools located in unincorporated Douglas County. The second was to put $331,250 to assist in the ongoing funding of a community response team dedicated specifically to serving our county's youth with mental health and substance abuse resources. And let me add that this is the first such team in the entire state of Colorado. Lastly, we set aside $10 million as one-time funding for school safety and student mental health services. The committees were also created by the remaining two resolutions, and these two committees are responsible for determining the distribution of the $10 million. Specifically, these two teams are the Supportive Mental Health for Students Funding Committee and the Physical School Safety and Protection Funding Committee.
Knowing we are not subject matter experts on either school safety or mental health resources, our primary goal was to be a catalyst for change while walking alongside of and in support of Douglas County schools with additional safety and mental health resources. Our objective as a board has been to galvanize a new way of thinking, to engage additional members of our community and subject matter experts who want to be a catalyst for change, and ultimately, to wrap additional safety and mental health resources around our children and their primary educational setting.
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of our Board, it is my honor to welcome to the podium two individuals who represent the reason we are all here tonight. Please help us welcome to the podium John and Maria Castillo.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners, for having us this evening. Thank you very much for inviting us here tonight and allowing us to speak and open. I just can't tell you how important and galvanizing this issue is to our community and communities across our nation, actually. We just really want to put a focus on that. Whatever we are working on to improve here in our own community needs to be the example that we set so that domestic terrorism across our nation doesn't take hold in other communities. And I don't have all of the answers, just as you all don't right now. We're trying to come together with ideas and think of things that will work. I am pleased to hear that the School Resource Officer Program is being put into schools. I can tell you from personal experience, at STEM school, when they had a school resource officer, Officer Rodriguez, I knew about him because my son knew him. So Kendrick made a connection with a good guy who was at his school. And I think that's important to know. I think that they created a relationship that he felt safe. And as we're doing this, that's why it's so important that we support these programs and we honor our everyday heroes who are in our schools, mixing with our youth and getting to know them. The other idea that I had is STEM is one of only a few schools that I know of that allow cell phones to be in the students' hands while they're in the classroom. I think that that's an important thing that we need to look at down the road. And I feel that, just like a couple of weeks ago, there is an app from RTD that helped identify a victim of, believe it was a homicide or a shooting on a train, very rapidly. I think that these are sustainable changes and things that can happen in our schools to help make them safer. I think we need to examine whatever the low-falling fruit are around us before we start to shake the tree. And I'm passionate about that. I feel that we need to build our communities and talk about it. I think that there should be a public information, you know, program put out. So in our Starbucks and our Chick-fil-A's, a school starts in two or three weeks. Maybe it has a picture of our son and tells people that they can use a program like Safe to Tell. Or they can start talking about something if it can save somebody who is stressed out. I find it very ironic that, you know, as a society, we build applications like Canvas where we can check our students' grades and find out how they're doing in the classroom. And we want them to advance in AP classes and become our future leaders. But as we're pushing them in this direction for perfection, we never think about how they might be impacted about taking their own lives or going off the deep edge and murdering a school. These perpetrators, when they went in that day, you know, they didn't care who they killed. They didn't have any political affiliation. They didn't care about their faith. They didn't care about their gender. They were there to murder, flat out. And as hard as it is for us as a society and a community, we need to put hard labels on what the actions are and act quickly and stay steadfast with them. We can work through the little details as we go. Things don't always work the first time. Some of these ideas, there might be complications I haven't thought of yet. But from the bottom of my heart and my feelings are, I just can't imagine, in a lot of ways, Maria and I, our devastation is eternal. But there's families, parents in this room, who are going to walk with this the rest of their lives with their kids in a different way. No 17-year-old kid should have to crawl in bed with their parents because they're afraid to sleep in their room. We need to be the charge to change and challenge ourselves to do better. I believe in this community. They've welcomed our family. And I want to be a part of change here. And I hope it takes hold so we can celebrate it in different areas. I've talked to Riley Howell's family, who he met his fate a couple of weeks before Kendrick. We need to stop this devastation, and we can do it. It is sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Thank you for your wonderful words, your heartfelt expressions, and your advice. And we will forever be indebted to you, and we continue to pray for you and your family. God bless you. So this evening, we'll be hearing from our two committees, as Commissioner Thomas had stated. But first of all, we're going to hear two other components that were also mentioned. The first is going to be the School Resources Officers Update. The second will be the Youth Community Response Team Update. For the School Resource Officers Update will be Under Sheriff Holly Nixon-Kluth.
Thank you, Commissioners and Chair. Can I close this? First, I, okay, thank you. First, I just wanted to say, after meeting and spending time with John and Maria Castillo, I can tell you I understand why Kendrick did what he did. Thank you for being here and reminding us why we're all here. Sheriff Spurlock and myself and every other sheriff I've worked for for the past 30 years put a priority on youth safety. I passionately believe that the relationships that the school resource officers build in the prevention of their presence in the schools is an integral part of the safety of our schools, our students, and staff. But I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for the resolution making all of this possible, and for the Douglas County School District for their collaborative efforts, as well as the charter and private schools that collaborate with us on school resource officers. As you said, Commissioner Thomas, on May 28th, in response to the STEM school shooting, Douglas County Board of County Commissioners approved $3 million to fund 50% of the costs associated with new school resource officers in any school in unincorporated Douglas County. The Douglas County Sheriff's Office current School Resource and Youth Unit is in partnership with School District, a private and a charter school currently. And we have these officers in the schools right now, as well as Supporting Officers of Youth Education and Safety in Schools, Juvenile Detective, Civilian Coordinator, and seven school marshals that are funded by the School District in an off-duty capacity. New School Resource Officers in partnership with Douglas County School District and charters will add five middle school SROs, two charter school SROs. And it's expected in December of 2019, we will transition seven school marshal positions that are currently supported by the Douglas County School District to full-time School Resource Officers for elementary schools with the matching funds that the county has provided. Supporting officers as well will be two SRO sergeants and another juvenile detective. Total officers after the new funding dedicated to school safety in unincorporated Douglas County will have a total of 20 SROs in Neighborhood, which is the School District Elementary, Middle, and Senior High Schools, three in charter schools, one in a private school, as well as a corporal and three sergeants, along with the supporting positions of a juvenile investigators, yes, and civilian, yes, coordinator. Our current efforts filling these School Resource Officer positions are as follows: We have three SROs that were on an eligibility list to be transferred upon the openings, which we will be transferring them. We have nine SROs on a new testing candidate list that have been identified as eligible. And we have five SROs that are currently and almost completed the hiring process for lateral officers from other agencies to fill these positions. Additionally, from our municipalities and their partnership, Castle Rock Police has one additional SRO in partnership with the School District, bringing their total to three. And they also have a school marshal program. Parker Police Department has one additional SRO in partnership with the School District, bringing their total to three, along with their school marshal program. And the Lone Tree Police Department has a modified school marshal program for their two elementary schools. This brings the total number of School Resource Officers to over 40 in the schools in Douglas County, and that doesn't include some of the school marshal programs. So I believe that for the approximately 70-plus thousand students in Douglas County attending schools, I can say that these numbers in themselves will help make the schools and staff and students safer. So thank you.
Thank you, Under Sheriff. I'm presenting for the Youth Community, excuse me, for the, presenting for the Supportive Mental Health for Students Funding Committee Recommendations, Barbara Drake, and she'll introduce a few other speakers.
Good evening, Commissioners, Barbara Drake, Douglas County Staff. The Community Response Team. First, we will hear from two people that are part of the Community Response Team family. Dr. James Brofio is a clinical psychologist. His practice includes clinicians and case managers that make up the community response teams, our county's co-responder teams. Dr. B. will tell you why the work of the CRT is so important. Then you will hear from Corporal Brian Briggs from the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Corporal Briggs is a founding member of the CRT and has been the law enforcement officer in this role since it started in May of 2017. He will share some stories about encounters with children, a few of his many encounters, and will tell you why this work is important and why he is excited to be the officer that will move over and provide the law enforcement support for the Youth Community Response Team. After that, I will share some background on the CRT, and then Nancy Engels from the School District. And I will share information about the specialized youth CRT as a joint venture of many partners dedicated to this model, how it fits into our existing efforts and programs within the School District and the community-based CRT, but also what makes the CRT different. So with that, I would like to invite Dr. Brofio to the podium.
Good afternoon. And Commissioners, Chair, thank you for the opportunity to talk about the CRT program, describe to you the remarkable work that our teams engage in every single day. It is a remarkable achievement, candidly, that we are able to affect this practical, real-time, remarkably effective program. And we thank you for the vision that you've had to implement this program. I am absolutely honored, first of all, to be part of these projects and to be part of the possibility of a youth CRT program. These programs truly are groundbreaking. As I mentioned before, they are visionary. They embody an intellectual honesty and a remarkable level of commitment that's been established by the Douglas County Commissioners and members of the Douglas County Mental Health Initiative, including county and law enforcement. The programs are put into application by a highly committed and very enthusiastic, skilled group of professionals. I'd like to take the opportunity to mention them by name. The Castle Rock Team, Dr. Allison Shu, Officer Wes Bodie, Ms. Nettie Sanchez, the Douglas County Team, Ms. Ellen Pronio, Corporal Brian Briggs, Steve Kalish. We also have the Mental Health Navigator, which is Ms. Leondra Montoya, and our administrative team, Ms. Barbara Drake, Ms. Laura Giacconi, and Ms. Maggie Cooper. I'd also like to make a comment about our law enforcement administrative team, Sergeant Torrance with Castle Rock and Lieutenant Washburn with the Douglas County Sheriff's Department. Now, let me put the work of these professionals into some context, please. As you know, the Douglas County Mental Health Initiative identified various gaps in the delivery of mental health and behavioral health services in Douglas County. Ultimately, these gaps have led to inaccessibility of care for many people, limited the effectiveness of treatment, and candidly, have hurt our community and community members in a variety of ways. We have seen firsthand escalation and complication of mental health and substance abuse issues, homelessness and poverty, and the burdening of first responder systems. And with this said, let me be very clear about the next point. Mental illness, behavioral dysfunction, emotional desperation are very, very real and affect all of us in one way or another. The impact is felt across demographics, and elements of this impact reverberate throughout our culture. We have a problem in this country addressing these issues in a functional manner. We use vague terms. We talk around it. We blame the problems away, and most concerningly, we often ignore the problem sometimes until it's too late. Our intervention system is too often focused on symptoms, ignoring the complex psychosocial issues that underlie many of the problems with maladjustment. I'd like to up the ante a little bit here in this discussion. One in six children have a mental disorder. That's about 400,000 youth. One in five children in this country, it actually occupies about 70% of the youth in the juvenile justice system, have mental health problems. Altogether, there are about 17 million children in our country between the ages, well, from 18 down, that have mental health problems. Very few receive any intervention at all. It's been estimated that only about 40%, and that's an optimistic estimate, are involved in any form of intervention. And less than 4% of our national budget is devoted to mental health care, despite the prevalence of mental health conditions exceeding the rates of cancer, diabetes, and HIV/AIDS combined. From a clinical perspective, we know that disorders early in development don't remit, as do acute conditions in adulthood. And so, there are children decidedly at risk for amplifying conditions: family dysfunction, violence in the home, abuse, all increases with this. Parents are often not well-informed of the complexity of symptoms with regard to long-term development, family relations, attachment. And instead, we have a focus on symptom mitigation. Dysfunction in teen years is rarely an isolated phenomenon. It reflects years of development and elaboration of early conditions. The bottom line here is that our kids are suffering. And sometimes, because of the suffering, they are inclined to make others suffer. These problems are not going away, certainly not by the more traditional methods that have been employed to date. I want to emphasize that we are not having a mental health crisis. To call it a crisis is to suggest that this is new, abrupt, or time-limited. Mental health problems and various forms of social maladjustment are part of the human condition, something we need to acknowledge, talk about clearly, and do something about. This consideration is amplified when we talk about children. The problems are never the result of any one thing. We can't simply ascribe the problems to biology, divorce, social media, bullying, abuse, neglect. Yes, these are all potential contributors, but it's a terrible oversimplification to think that the various forms of psychological suffering and dysfunction are due to any one issue. We have to have a sophisticated understanding of mental health conditions, and nowhere is this more evident than with regard to violence. And nowhere is this more true than with regard to children in our community. These problems are not going away. We simply can't medicate them away, complain about them, blame others. We have to have courageous conversations about mental illness within families, in the schools, in community leadership. We must develop methods of engagement that are creative, courageous, and sometimes novel, such as the CRT programs. The implementation of the CRT programs has been a bold step forward, and we thank you. It is a strong stance. It's a clear statement from our community leaders. And it emphasizes that mental health is a problem that affects us all. It has to be addressed in a way that's very different than we've approached it before. We can't ignore it or minimize it as a health condition. Mental health issues and violence will be actively addressed, and abuse, neglect, discrimination in any form, exposure to violence, whatever the causes, must be addressed from the standpoint of a no-fail model. The CRT programs actively work to destigmatize mental illness, especially with regard to children, create caring communities that are well-educated, and support family-based treatment. Extending this thinking to our involvement with children, families, and schools is a necessary furthering of the bold step forward. I want to suggest a couple of points here. One, we cannot accept school and community shootings as some sort of new normal. We can't tolerate that. As adults, we have to absolutely model compassion, tolerance, and acceptance for our kids and embody intellectual honesty about the issues. We also have to recognize that just as there needs to be clear reference points for unhealthy living, that we have to have clear reference points for adaptive and psychologically healthy living. We also have to not forget that there are remarkable children. And we have to tap into that strength. And we frankly have to have the guts to do it every day. So I want to express my thanks in speaking for my team, their thanks to you, the County Commissioners, the Douglas County Mental Health Initiative, the Sheriff's Office, and other law enforcement, the School District, and the Department of Human Services. Thank you for taking the lead in creating programs that support us all and now can directly target our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brofio.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. I too would like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to take our program into the schools. Over the last two and a half years, we've encountered multiple people. Obviously, we see a lot of kids after school. And so, we got to know a lot of them, thus, we could actually help them when they are in the schools at times, after building that rapport. So on behalf, again, of my clinician, Ellen Pronio, and myself, I just wanted to say thank you. We're so excited to get into the schools and work with DHS, the School District, Nancy and them, and hopefully affect a little bit of change. That's what we're looking to do. A couple examples of how we helped over the last year. William, we'll call him, was a seven-year-old that was at an elementary school. From the pictures, you can see he had an explosive episode and kind of trashed the school conference room. They stepped out, called patrol, patrol called us. Actually, the parents had let the school know that he was a client of ours. And so, they requested us to come. So we made the drive up to the school. Knowing William and that he likes police officers and some superheroes and things like that, we were able to have a conversation with him to get him calmed down. And then, I think one of the keys for CRT, if people really want to know where we are, we're really great at resource connecting and getting people connected to help. And so, working with his family, great family, their insurance company, which is part of the deal these days, you just got to have somebody to pay for this stuff and work with the Department of Human Services. We were able to help get him connected to some ABA therapy. And they're at about 32 hours a week now, which is pretty a good amount, if you were to know about that kind of therapy. Last, we've only had one call about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, where he got kind of escalated over summer break because of the structure, I think. But overall, one of the things with CRT, I guess you should understand, is that we're very flexible because the Sheriff's Office and our partner agencies allow us to just handle mental health. I don't have to worry about breaking for the next car accident and stuff like that. So we can really think outside the box. And Barbara and DHS and all our partners work really well. really well, so we can look at different ideas that maybe weren't able to be tried before. So, like with this one, to be able to partner with an ABA therapy and get Kaiser onboard and things like that, that was a big win, and William's doing way better now. And his parents were learned, were given learning techniques to on how to handle William and his abilities. So, and then the next one, we'll call her Sarah. This is a typical one, I think Douglas County Patrol runs into, especially towards the beginning of school and stuff like that, where kids don't want to go to school. Well, when we looked into this one further, Sarah had really only gone to three days of school, and this had been in October. And when we talked to the mom and stuff like that, it was really just down to some social anxiety, some things like that are going on. And so, you know, they tried the tough love, we tried different things, and we actually, on two occasions, mom called us, said Sarah's not going to school, can you get her there? And we went and got her and put her in the car, no handcuffs or anything like that, we just gave her a ride to school, and just delivered her to the school. But bigger picture was the dynamic that when we got our case managers involved, and you looked at what was going on, we were able to get the whole family into a therapy stuff session, if you will, to kind of figure out why doesn't Sarah really want to go to school? So a combination of family and individual therapy. The last we checked in with Sarah towards the end of the year, she was going to school regularly. She still had her moments, but we have not had to go and take her, given her a ride or anything in a long time. So, she's doing good, and also, I'd like to, we chimed in on this one, we got the SROs involved, and we also helped the parents understand how they can access the truancy courts and things like that, to help give Sarah a consequence outside of the family. So, again, with all our partners, we just have the unique ability to really bring a lot of different resources to bear in a crisis time. And that's what we're looking forward to doing at the school district with our partners, and Nancy, they're awesome, and we're just excited. I'm excited, I'm huge, I have four kids, so I'm big into kids, and I look at it as an opportunity to get at this earlier than later, because we deal with a lot of 40, 50, 60-year-olds that, like Dr. B. said, probably had some issues as kids. So if we can get to them younger and sooner, we're excited at the opportunities that we can bring, get these kids some help. So, super excited, appreciate you all approving the money to bring this team to bear, and I just want to thank you so much. I think we're going to help make a difference, and I think the school district and DHS and all our partners are going to just rock this. I'm excited, so I appreciate it.
Forget to turn my mic on every time, now it's pretty loud. Thank you, Corporal Briggs.
So this is our new logo, by the way. So, Community Response Team, the Youth Community Response Team, as has been said, is a program of the Douglas County Mental Health Initiative. Just a little bit of background, I won't spend too much time on this, but the Community Response, our co-responder program, launched in 2017. It's designed to respond to 911 calls, unit to unit, and the team self-dispatches when the primary concern is mental health. We also have a component that includes fire EMS when needed and a case manager for follow-up. Everybody has a distinct role as part of the Community Response Team. Law enforcement secures the scene, mental health clinicians perform crisis evaluation, safety planning, fire EMS provides field medical clearance when needed, and case managers follow up and connect people to resources. We received many referrals from school resource officers already. One of the things that I think is really unique about our CRT teams, and we're adding a third team in the community and then adding the Youth CRT team, is they all work together. They work across jurisdictions, they work together on difficult situations to identify possible remedies and share mental health resources, they overlap shifts, and they work together as partners, and they identify as the Community Response Team even outside their identification with their own jurisdiction. And the Youth CRT is going to be a part of that larger CRT family. In 2018, our regular, our two CRT teams served over 1,100 separate individuals, over 1,943 encounters. You can see the breakdown here of what those involved. We saved 100 individuals who would otherwise have been taken to jail, saved 269 situations that would otherwise have been taken to the emergency department. And I want to say very proudly that our two officers, Corporal Briggs and Officer Bodie, in 1,943 encounters, the two of them have not arrested a single person on one of these mental health calls that they have responded to. So we began to look at what were the, what's the balance of numbers, where we were getting a lot of calls about youth, and so we started really looking at that in earnest in 2018. And you can see that out of those numbers, they had 620 encounters with youth, including 213 that were 911 calls. So they served almost 400 unique children and youth during 2018, and you can see kind of the types of calls, welfare checks that are behavioral health, suicide, suicidal subjects, and disturbances that are typically parent-child conflict calls. You can see here, this chart really illustrates the, you know, what's the largest percentage of the age range that the CRT, the regular community CRT is being called out on. And this gives you a, another example of the actual numbers associated with that. CRT work in youth suicide responses shows those high numbers in 14, 15, and 16. Now, I would like to ask Nancy Ingles to talk a little bit about the suicide assessment data from the school district.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. In the Douglas County School District, all staff are trained every year on what we call keeping students safe. So these include all staff that work in our schools, in addition to our support staff and our department staff as well. This training helps every adult understand warning signs that a student might have a safety risk, a risk of maybe hurting themselves or other people. The training also identifies for the adults who in the schools is trained to follow up and perhaps to an assessment with students. One result of this is a large number of suicide assessments that are conducted in our schools. So you can see in the 18, 19 school year, we had just over 1,700 suicide assessments completed. This includes screens as well as full assessments. These assessments occur in all of our neighborhood schools, our magnet schools, alternative schools, and our charter schools. Almost half of them this last year occurred at the elementary level, and the remainder of them are pretty evenly distributed between middle school and high school. Now, the outcome of these assessments is shown here. So, 76% of these assessments result in the safety concern being screened out. So there could be a teaching and learning opportunity with the student, and most likely, the student returns to their normal routine. The remainder of these assessments, however, result in some concern for safety. So you can see that 15% of them in the last year resulted in the student being released directly to parents. In some cases, the parent may take their child directly to the hospital. In other cases, the parent may immediately make a follow-up appointment with their mental health provider. It just sort of depends. And then you can see that in 9% of the cases this year, a student was transported directly from school to a hospital, either by NSRO, a patrol officer, or other first responder. So having the ability to work with a CRT team, there is some opportunity here. In situations like this, where a student might be released directly to the parent, it's possible that the CRT team could come to school and meet with the parent and child, and talk about the different resources that they can be connected to relatively quickly. Similarly, if a child is in imminent danger and needs to be transported for psychiatric care, a CRT team could provide that transport and directly admit the student to a psychiatric care provider and perhaps bypass an emergency department.
Thank you, Ms. Ingles.
So we're looking at our 2019 statistics and seeing similar kinds of data as to what we saw in 2018. So suicidal subjects and disturbance calls are largest in that 0 to 17 age group. Same with the overall CRT calls, about 192 calls pertaining to youth, or roughly 27% of total calls have come in thus far this year. In 2018, that was about 37% of all the calls. So we're seeing similar trends in terms of the age of individuals that the community-based teams are being called in on. So what are the key features that we're looking at for the Youth Community Response Team? So one of them is that we want to do a better job of connecting what's happening at school with what's happening in the home, with what's happening out in the community, and figure out how we communicate among the partners as well as families about that. This program is designed to improve that communication between law enforcement, SROs, schools, the CRT team, families, and community providers. We are working to develop a network of prevention and early intervention services that will be available to youth and families. These resources are being lined up by our Human Services Department in agreement with the Tennyson Center that is providing some funding, but it will not require formal system involvement in order to access these resources. So they will be able to provide intensive in-home services that can follow up from the encounter with the Youth CRT within 12 to 24 hours of the CRT's contact with that child and family. They will make an offer of services to the family. And that's quite different than what we have with our community-based teams right now. The Youth CRT is a joint venture of the county, schools, law enforcement, mental health professionals, fire EMS, human services, and community treatment and resource providers. The Youth CRT will serve school-aged children, and we will initially work with schools that are located in the unincorporated parts of Douglas County. We're not calling it a pilot, but we're going to start out, the bulk of schools in our county are in the unincorporated areas, we will start out there. There's great anticipation that this program will grow into all the schools in the county. Our anticipated launch date is as close as possible to the beginning of this school year. It'll be staffed by DCSO officer, Officer Briggs is going to be the officer on this team, an experienced mental health clinician, case manager with juvenile experience, and fire EMS if needed. This Youth CRT is designed to complement the efforts of schools in Douglas County to comprehensively address mental health and suicide prevention. As was mentioned, the Board of County Commissioners has allocated ongoing funds for this team, and this amount of money covers the mental health clinician, case manager, law enforcement, fire EMS, and some operating expenses, i.e. a vehicle and some other equipment. The outcomes are, some of them are very similar to the community outcomes, and some of them are unique to a youth team. We want to avoid taking youth to detention or emergency departments during a mental health emergency when that is not needed. We will directly connect youth and families to appropriate treatment and resources to keep them and the community safe, and we also want to address risk factors that may increase the likelihood of a youth becoming system-involved in either juvenile justice and/or the youth services through the Department of Human Services. So some similar goals to the community-based teams, but some that are unique to youth. And those are your presenters for this evening, and that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drake. We look forward to hearing more, and what a great program. And Ms. Drake will also be presenting the committee recommendations for the mental health and student funding.
So for the record, Barbara Drake again for staff, and so I would like to introduce the members of the Supportive Mental Health for Students Committee that are here tonight, and then turn it over to the Chair of the Committee to give the committee's recommendations to the Board. So the Chair is Sarah Erickson from the 18th Judicial District Attorney's Office. Also with us tonight is Julie Felsky from Platte River Academy, Shelley Sack from the 18th Judicial District Probation Department, and Erin White, who's a Douglas County School District parent and site director for Mana Connect. And did I miss anybody else in the community that is, oh, sorry, thank you, okay, and Jason Hopkis, who is the President and CEO of NAMI of Arapahoe and Douglas Counties. So with that, I will introduce Sarah Erickson and welcome her.
Thank you for the warm introduction. Again, my name is Sarah Erickson, and I am the Director of Diversion at the District Attorney's Office here in the 18th. It has been my honor to chair the committee working on supportive mental health for our students and the recommended funding. On behalf of the committee, I am presenting our recommendations for one-time funding to support the mental health of Douglas County students. In line with our charge, the committee reviewed research, policies and practices already in place, current initiatives and best practices, in order to reach our eight recommendations for one-time funding by the county. Our recommendations are aimed at supporting, expanding, or implementing approaches to mental health and school safety that we believe really work. I want to thank the members of our committee for sharing their expertise and experience. Their commitment to this effort and the thoughtfulness on the topics was critical to our ability to reach specific and actionable recommendations. I also want to thank those members of our community who came in person to our meetings or shared their thoughts and ideas through email. We appreciated the input. The topic of mental health is vast and can be complicated. We chose to ground our recommendations in a value statement that holds that an effective social, emotional, and mental health system for youth in Douglas County must support a culture of safety and well-being, and include in-school programming, easy access to services for youth, increased awareness of mental health and safety, and trauma-informed communication and collaboration between systems. Our first recommendation is for the county to fund assessments in each individual school that chooses to participate. We want assessments in order to understand the strengths, needs, and gaps in mental health services and student safety. No two schools in Douglas County are the same. Implementing or expanding mental health supports or programming must also then be unique to each school community. Individual school assessments would then become the foundation for a targeted and tailored mental health and school safety plan in each school. Why we discuss mental health when talking about school safety is nicely summarized by the U.S. Secret Service School Safety Reports in both 2004 and 2018. The foundation of school safety rests in creating cultures of climate, cultures and climates, excuse me, of safety, respect, and emotional support. We know from the most recent Healthy Kids Colorado survey that 48% of high school students in Douglas high school students in Douglas County report a low commitment to their school. A low commitment to school is considered a risk factor and is correlated to substance use, delinquency, teen pregnancy, school dropout, and violence. According then to this data, almost half of our Douglas County high school students are at risk, and this is why we must take action. To address these issues directly, county funding should be used to make either the Safe Communities Safe Schools assessments or the Mental Health Colorado School Assessment Tool available to every school in the county. Each school implementing an assessment should establish or use an already-established multidisciplinary team to lead the assessment process, evaluate the results, and implement any resulting programming. Student voices should be prioritized in this process. Each school or district's multidisciplinary team could then request county funding to implement or expand training, programming, and policies based on the assessment results and community input. We would like the emphasis to be on social, emotional learning, and mental health supports. Guidelines for the county funds will need to be established and should include requirements for sustainability planning, the use of best practices, and proven effective programming. The Center for Study and Prevention of Violence, right here in Colorado, has created a research-based program focused on school safety. The Safe Communities Safe School Project includes climate surveys for students, staff, and parents. The surveys help school communities understand the effectiveness of what they're already doing, provides a basis for setting data-driven priorities for change, and helps school communities to pick programming to meet their specific needs and goals. The Mental Health Colorado School Assessment Tool identifies ten best practices for a comprehensive mental health program in schools and helps schools to understand what they can do to succeed in each area. Schools should determine which of these two tools is most appropriate for their communities. Once schools have assessed their mental health programming, safety, and culture, they should be empowered to act on that information. The county should fund programming grounded in the assessments but identified and requested by each school and community. The assessments may identify the need for expanded social, emotional learning. They may identify the need for additional mental health supports and services or suicide prevention and intervention. To have an impact, each school needs to identify for themselves what they need and what they are willing to commit to. And the county should use funds to encourage and support these efforts to make positive change. Social, emotional learning teaches skills to manage emotions, set and achieve goals, establish and manage positive relationships, and to make responsible decisions. Social, emotional skills are essential to success in school, in work, and in life. Many schools in Douglas County already recognize that social, emotional learning improves skills, attitudes, behaviors, and academic achievement. There are many social, emotional learning programs in schools already and to choose from. Douglas County School District already has social, emotional curriculum that they make available to schools and which schools are implementing today. We cannot talk about safety without talking about suicide. Suicide was the leading cause of death for young people ages ten to twenty-four in Colorado in 2017. Among Colorado's high school youth, one in four felt so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more that they stopped doing some of their usual activities. One in seven seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. But students who feel safe at school are over three times less likely to attempt suicide. There are effective suicide prevention and intervention programs. Many schools in Douglas County have already incorporated the Sources of Strength Program or the Companion Program Resilient Me. Signs of Suicide helps to raise awareness. Assist programs help equip members of the community to respond when someone shares they are having thoughts of suicide. And programs like the Second Wind Fund provide access to mental health treatment. Identifying, adding, or expanding programming based on school assessments requires an investment, but I'll tell you that it's money well spent. We heard loud and clear from students that they don't know where to start when they need mental health support. This is true for adults, too. The county should use funds to help make it easy for youth to access mental health care. Building on systems that are already in place, our second area of recommendations is for the county to fund an expansion of the Text2Tip program currently hosted by the Douglas County Sheriff's Office to include an enhanced and specific mental health-focused response. Making access to mental health services easy for students can be achieved through the joint efforts of the county, the Sheriff's Office, local police departments, community partners, mental health providers, the Mental Health Initiative, schools, and of course, parents and students. In Douglas County, students can use two anonymous reporting systems. Safe2Tell is a statewide program monitored by the Colorado Attorney General's Office, and Text2Tip is locally monitored by Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Text2Tip allows for real-time responses and communication with users. Both systems share tips electronically with school staff and SROs. Students are using Text2Tip to share concerns about drugs, bullying, suicide threats, and concerns about their fellow students. What we wonder is what if we had a way to respond to those tips specific to mental health directly with mental health support? What if there was someone who could help kids access the support that they say would be most comfortable? We think we can. We're recommending that the county fund a mental health navigator program connected to the Text2Tip program that includes access to funds for treatment by contracting with a community-based provider. An expanded Text2Tip program would include a mental health navigator in the team responding to tips. Through a contract with a community-based provider, the mental health navigator would respond in real time to appropriate mental health-related texted tips. They would help youth or families connect to already existing community resources like the Colorado Crisis Line, their school-based counselor, or programs like the Second Wind Fund. The navigator could collaborate and coordinate with the new youth-focused CRT under the Mental Health Initiative, and they would manage funds designated to help families facing financial barriers to accessing mental health care. Many families let us know that even if they have private health insurance, high deductibles and copays prevent them from being able to access the mental health treatment they need. Imagine if students could use a system that they're already familiar with to share concerns about crimes in their schools, to also let us know that they need help or that they know a friend who needs help. And if we respond to those concerns and needs with support, easy access, reduced barriers, system coordination, and law enforcement only when truly needed, we believe we can achieve this for youth and families in Douglas County. Our third area of recommendations focuses on increasing awareness of mental health and safety. We're recommending that the county fund an age-effective marketing campaign with the goals of reducing the stigma around mental health, raising awareness of the expanded Text2Tip program, and encouraging and informing our ongoing community conversations about mental health. One of the top recommendations for school safety from the University of Colorado Center for the Study and Prevention of Violence is the use of an anonymous bystander reporting system. Once Text2Tip has been expanded to directly respond to the mental health needs of our students, we need to make sure that the community understands how it works and the resources that it makes available. We understand that talking about mental health can be hard. We don't always have the words to do it, but we want to let our community, especially our young people, know that we don't have to whisper when talking about mental health. We're going to talk about it without shame and in a way that acknowledges that we are all on the spectrum of mental health every day. That's every one of us. Text2Tip use over the last school year was down. Students let us know that they don't clearly understand how Text2Tip works or what happens when you use it. Students still hesitate to share their concerns because they don't want to tell on others. But Safe2Tell reports that across the state, their tips were at record highs. One difference, Safe2Tell recently rolled out an aggressive marketing campaign. We do not have to start from scratch. The Douglas County Mental Health Initiative already has a group of experts at work in a rebranding effort. County funds should be combined with the Mental Health Initiative efforts to develop and execute a youth-focused education and anti-stigma mental health campaign. Youth and parent advisory groups should be created to inform and guide this process. The campaign should include updated marketing for the expanded Text2Tip program and help students and the public understand how and when to use the system. It needs to explain the process, and it needs to address concerns that are identified by the advisory groups. We recognize that youth are more likely to share mental health and safety concerns with peers than adults. We are recommending that the county fund youth-specific mental health first aid training in all mental health, excuse me, in all middle and high schools in the county. Our recommendation is that mental health first aid for youth be incorporated into the curriculum for all students. We want our students to be equipped to positively talk about mental health, to know how to respond when friends share concerns about mental health, and importantly, to know when a trusted adult or an anonymous reporting system should be notified. Warning signs of crisis, suicide, or violence should not be ignored. Mental health first aid for youth taught in our schools will help to normalize mental health in our community. It keeps our conversations about mental health and the supports available ongoing, and it lets students know that if they're struggling, they're not alone. Our last area of recommendations highlights the need for trauma-informed communication and collaboration between systems. We are recommending that the county fund the production or purchase of a trauma-informed training for school employees, parents, and students. Trauma-informed care training recognizes that when kids experience a traumatic event, it can diminish concentration, memory, and other abilities they need to succeed. Trauma can lead to poor coping skills like drug and alcohol abuse. Problem behaviors are often manifestations of trauma. Trauma-informed schools can become safe and supportive environments where students and adults make positive connections, students are able to manage their trauma symptoms, this will in turn improve behavior, and they can become confident and successful learners. County-funded trauma-informed training should be provided in an easily accessible format, including online versions, and the content should be varied for the intended audiences. School employees, parents, and students should all have access to the training. Trauma-informed training then becomes the backbone for our final recommendation, the implementation of Handle With Care protocols in each school. Douglas County funds should be used to support the collaboration and coordination needed to implement Handle With Care, which is a trauma notification protocol. This includes our law enforcement partners, the Department of Human Services, the Mental Health Initiative, all schools in the county, and of course, our parents and students. Under Handle With Care, law enforcement agencies and the Department of Human Services can issue a Handle With Care notice to schools when a student has been exposed to violence or other traumatic events. The notice does not include any details about what a student has experienced, but lets schools know that something has happened that may be influencing how a student is showing up in school. Schools then incorporate trauma-informed responses and supports as needed to help lessen the impact of trauma on students' abilities to learn, form relationships, and avoid problematic behaviors. Handle With Care strengthens the collaboration and communication between systems and provides critical information to schools without violating confidentiality. All of the recommendations from the Supportive Mental Health for Students Funding Committee are based on an integrated approach to school safety, mental health, and social, emotional learning. This includes recognizing other efforts in the county that will support and are complementary to our recommendations. In order to keep the momentum of the county's one-time funding and ensure sustainability and impact, some ideas and recommendations from the Committee and the community should be folded into the work of the Douglas County Mental Health Initiative. The Douglas County Health, Mental Health Initiative is a collaboration that has brought the Community Response Team to the county and supports a mental health navigator to work with those serious mental illnesses and substance use disorders. Fortunately, everyone's already heard the great work that the Mental Health Initiative is doing, so I'm going to slide through these next two slides. In summary, the Supportive Mental Health for Students Funding Committee is recommending the county use funds to support in-school programming, easy access to mental health services for youth. They should increase the awareness of mental health and safety and improve trauma-informed communication and collaboration between systems. In schools, our two-part recommendation includes first that the county should fund assessments in each school in order to understand the strengths, needs, and gaps in mental health services and student safety in each participating school. Second, the county should fund programming including social, emotional learning, mental health supports and services, and suicide prevention and intervention that are supported by the county-funded mental health and school safety assessments. To make mental health services easy for youth to access, the county should fund the expansion of the Text2Tip program to include an enhanced mental health-focused response and fund a mental health navigator program for youth connected to Text2Tip. This effort needs to include access to funds for treatment for families who don't have the funds themselves. To increase the awareness of mental health and safety in the community, funds should be used to support an age-effective marketing campaign with the goals of raising awareness of the expanded Text2Tip program, reducing stigma, and encouraging ongoing community conversations about mental health. The county should also fund incorporating youth mental health first aid training into all middle and high schools. Lastly, trauma-informed collaboration and communication between systems in the county should be supported by funds used for the production or purchase of trauma-informed care training for school employees, parents, and students. And Handle With Care, a trauma notification protocol, should be implemented in every school. We were fortunate to have two Douglas County students on our Committee. They were unable to join us here this evening. Hopefully, they're out doing some other pro-social activity. But they provided a lot of feedback on our process. Mental health support and school safety for youth must be informed by youth, and based on our experiences, our youth are interested and they're eager to participate. Both of our student representatives gave us quotes that they asked us to share with the county commissioners. I'm going to read them. They are a little lengthy. Please stay with me. I'm going to read them. They are a little lengthy. Please stay with me. Mia Hayden, who is the co-founder of Oasis Mental Health and a Thunder Ridge High School student, said, "Working on the Supportive Mental Health for Students Funding Committee has been an amazing experience that I feel privileged to be a part of. In this committee, my voice and the voices of students across the county have been given the opportunity to not just be heard, but to be thoroughly listened to. I have never been around a more supportive group that gives my opinions and my ideas of action a sense of importance. It is astounding to me that so many people come together to work tirelessly for students across Colorado. After working closely with them, there is no doubt in my mind that we will all collectively make the best decisions to greatly improve and impact mental health conditions for students." Melanie Jo, also at Thunder Ridge, shared that being the student voice on the Supportive Mental Health for Students Funding Committee has been an invaluable experience. I saw Douglas County listening to the needs of our student community and making a necessary change. The committee spent hours building funding recommendations, researching programs, and most importantly, prioritizing the mental health of students. After collaborating with this committee of supportive and knowledgeable individuals, I wholeheartedly believe we are taking the first step to vastly improving the social and behavioral health of students across the district. On behalf of the committee, I would like to thank Barbara Drake, Maggie Cooper, and Carrie Gross for their efforts in support of our work. We would also like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for this opportunity to serve our community. We're excited to see how Douglas County and its many partners will continue to lead in supporting the mental health and safety of our students, and we hope to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erickson. And at the end of the session this evening, commissioners will be making some comments, but I think it's appropriate. I would just like to each commissioner to just recognize this committee.
Well, I have an incredible amount of gratitude to you as the chair of this committee and all of the members that have sacrificed countless hours to make this a reality for all of us in Douglas County. Mental health is a critical issue. You've recognized that. You've addressed it head-on in a very short timeframe. So I just want to humbly thank you again for the service to our community.
Sarah, you did an excellent job with that presentation. I'd like to thank you. And you pulled on my heartstrings. As the coroner here, I dealt with lots of suicides with our kids. And so I thought you really nailed several things in there that I've lived with many of the people in this audience. So thank you to each and every one of you on this committee who cares deeply about our kids and our community. So thank you.
Sarah, I think it's just important that we recognize you and the committee right now while you're here. It's fresh because it certainly is just, it opens our eyes to the numerous things you've had addressed, you've examined, and what you've presented. And I really want to thank you for bringing it to us emotionally. You've done very well with that. And I really want to make the point that you have made it evident that many of these programs exist in many of the schools. And I think that's important because it's not reinventing, it's just reinforcing. You've done a wonderful job with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Presenting the Physical School Safety and Protection Funding Committee is Mr. Terrence Quinn, our Director of Planning and Community Development.
Good evening, commissioners. Again, I'm Terrence Quinn, staff. Commissioners, it's a great honor to introduce the Physical School Safety and Protection Funding Committee. You have brought together an august group of experts to make recommendations to you on school safety. You will hear tonight a broad and potentially integrated set of ideas for school safety and security. And I would like to thank the committee members for their extraordinary efforts and the gift of time. They really sacrificed much to be able to get this work done. I don't really think I've worked with a more capable set of individuals. So I would also like to especially thank county staff who tirelessly supported this committee through their efforts. And I would also like to especially thank Committee Chair Clinton Doris, whose competent leadership and focus has carried the committee to what I believe is a very productive end. I'd like to now introduce Clinton Doris, who is going to report out on the committee's recommendations. Clint?
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And certainly, when you start out on these adventures, you never know where they're going to lead. But we'll try to condense this a little bit. Obviously, due to the sensitivity of the information, a lot of this presentation will be kind of at the wave top level, right? Because we don't want to identify some particular vulnerability, if you will. So, let's see here if I can get a clicker to work. The, I'd like to ask each member of the committee to just stand up and very briefly introduce themselves. And what I'm really interested in is why they're here, right? And it's not because they're wearing a sheriff's uniform or a law enforcement uniform. So if we can start over here with Stephen, if you don't mind.
Evening, Commissioner. Thank you. My name is Stephen Bradburn. I'm with the Department of Homeland Security, Federal Protective Service. I'm also a resident of Douglas County. It's been an honor and privilege to be working with my colleagues on this extremely important committee. It's my hope as we go forward that in my role as representative of Homeland Security, I can create and facilitate and leverage vast resources of the Homeland Security, including Secret Service, Cyber Infrastructure Security Agency, my agency, Science and Technology, and Intelligence. This is a very, very important issue, not just for the county, but for the city, state, and nation.
Good evening, commissioners, chair. My name is Lori Nelson. I'm a dad. I have a daughter who's a junior in a neighborhood high school. I'm also a husband. My wife is a school teacher in the Douglas County School District. The most important people in my life are in these schools. I've been a member of the School Accountability Committee of Ledge High School for four years, and I've been committed to addressing school safety for many years before STEM shooting. So that's why. Thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening. Mike Delafano with South Metro Fire Rescue. I'm the Assistant Chief of Government Affairs. Much of my early career, I was working in the Fire Marshal's Office, specifically partnering with our school districts, not only to gain fire and building code compliance, but to work through a lot of security issues in the design of new buildings. And I'm proud to be part of South Metro Fire Rescue. We really value our strong partnerships with our law enforcement agencies in our communities that we serve, even having paramedics embedded in our SWAT teams in Arapahoe and Douglas County, as well as helping to develop some really cutting-edge active shooter multi-agency trainings that we've conducted in just recent months. So I'm proud to be part of this and thank you for asking.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Nicole Hunt, and I am a Douglas County resident and a mother of four children that attend Douglas County School here. And it's been my pleasure to serve on this committee. I'm an attorney by trade, but I'm here because I love my kids and I want to make sure that they're safe. And my children are attending a charter school. I'm here as a charter school parent representative. And I thank you for your honor of serving on this committee.
Hi, commissioners. Holly Nicholson-Cliff, under Sheriff of the Sheriff's Office. I'm honored to have been appointed to this group. I really hope that in everything we did, we were able to make a difference in the community and for our students and schools. As a citizen and kids that have gone to public and private schools in Douglas County, it's a huge interest to me, and my main reason for being involved in this is that I hope in some way I can make a difference so that this never happens again.
Good evening. My name is Chris Zimmerman. I'm a principal in Douglas County School District. And just like many of my colleagues, I feel personally responsible for every student. Every 68,000 students walk into our building. We see their faces and including staff. I have two kids in Douglas County, and my wife also teaches in Douglas County. So this is something that's very near and dear to my heart, and I'm glad to be a part of it.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Lori Bactel, Head of Operations at Skyview. I thank the district and for their counterparts of looking outside the box of their community schools and what charters and what we can do. I am cooperator there. We have head of schools and have operations. And I care about every student, community member, and parent that comes in our doors. And the school should never be thought of an unsafe place to be.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Rich Payne. I'm the Director of Safety and Security for Douglas County School District. One of the main goals for me, why I'm on this committee, and also it's part of my job to make sure that anything that we do and we put in place in the school district is a best practice, something that's been research-based. We're good stewards for our county member, our money that's provided to the school district. We want to make sure that we don't just put money into a program that hasn't been looked at, researched to make sure that we're good stewards to our taxpayers' money. We also thank our community members for our bond because we're able to put a lot of stuff in place for our school district that we'll talk about and hear about tonight that has been in place and in the process of place and we are to implement and make things better in the school district. So my job is to make sure that every student, every faculty member, and also every parent and grandparent, anybody that steps foot on our properties, is safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll round this out by just saying that, you know, it's only one kid at a time, right? All of us are responsible to take care of one kid at a time. It only takes one of us to help save a child or a student. And so, you know, we've probably got well north of a couple thousand hours into this between this particular committee, as well as the staff. And everybody has been fantastic. For the first time probably in my career, we just skipped over all the storming and norming phases and went straight into a highly effective team. And that doesn't happen without a common goal. And what I'll tell you and the citizens of this county is that that common goal was to take care of children. It was indifferent to what uniform is out here, what position or role that we held within our community. So I think I wanted them to stand up so that people understood, that the citizens understood, the breadth of the committee that you had established. And that when we speak through these recommendations, it comes with great knowledge and competency in our community. So with that, we'll press forward.
Mr. Doris?
Yes, sir.
You're a very humble man. I think we'd like to hear a few words for you. Why?
Well, the why is because it just takes one of us to make a difference. And so I'm highly engaged in youth activities in this, in our county. My heart is broken for the amount of suicide that we have here. And just as we've heard this evening, I think these type of things go hand in hand. And so, not to pat myself on the back, but I'm probably approaching about 400 hours within a month of time for this effort. That's how much it means to me. I don't need a pat on the back. I'm just telling you that it's that important. And everybody on this committee just dove straight in and spent that type of effort on this, including the staff. So to me, it's personally about saving children. I've got four children, and, you know, we want them all to be safe. That's part of being, living in a great community. So we've got a handful of things that we'll talk through here, kind of as an overview. Certainly, from a contextual perspective, we are here primarily as kicked off by this wonderful hero sitting right here. And as a former Army officer that did six-man team covert ops, what I'd like to express to the Castillos is I would go to combat any day with your son unequivocally. Those are the type of young men that we sought because they would go in without regard to their own safety. And it's just amazing what that young man did, and unequivocally, he saved lives. So this Bible verse, "Greater love has no one then to lay down his life for his own friends."
Mr. Doris, your back is to him, but Chief Jack Colley with Castrock Police Department just walked in. He's a member of the committee, so I thought you'd like to recognize him.
Yes.
Have him come forward.
Thank you. Should I embarrass him and have him stand up? And yeah, chief, would you please? Everybody kind of gave a heartfelt, so now you've got a pretty high bar that you have to get over. Heartfelt reason for why they're on this committee?
Good evening, commissioners. Apologize for being a little late. I was coming from a council meeting across the street, so. So for me, you know, the safety and security of our community is our number-one priority for myself as a chief of police, as well as the safety of our police officers. And schools are communities within a community. And at any given school day, we have, you know, a large number of kids that are in those communities. And it is so important for us to keep them safe. I've spent more than three decades in this profession with the passion of keeping people safe and working towards that goal. And certainly, here in Douglas County, after we experienced the tragedy that we did, it even brought it closer to home. So for me, it's about keeping our kids safe, keeping the parents safe, the teachers, the staff at the schools and throughout our community, and for the future. You know, we certainly want the kids to be in an environment that, where they feel safe and secure, just like adults, right? It's important for all of us to be in an environment where we feel safe and secure so that we can thrive. And our future are the kids. And we have to have an environment that is safe and secure for them, where they can thrive. And that's what this is all about. I am very proud of the work that this committee has done. Clint has done an amazing job as chair. Everybody jumped in from the get-go and did awesome work. So I'm proud of everybody. I'm glad and honored to have been a part of it. And I couldn't ask for a better outcome as far as what we were able to do in a short amount of time. And I know that is going to pay dividends in the future for us and provide that environment that we're all looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. So just a handful of administrative things, if you will. So obviously, contextually, we had a resolution that created this opportunity for us to investigate best-of-breed and best practices across this. One of the things that stood out to me in the specific resolution that the committee signed was one-time expenditures that are proven to improve the physical security of the school building. So proven is an operative word to me, and I think that's what we've done. Another thing that's kind of important to understand is we actually, we're looking across the entire county, not just a school district, not just charter schools, not just private schools, but all of them. We'll talk about that a little bit later, but part of our logic was that when Holly or Jack get a call and there's a distress at a school, they don't ask, "Is this a private school? Is this a charter school?" They go, right? So when we looked at this, we looked at how safe are our schools? The other piece of context in this is that I learned, and I think many of us did, what the folks in the school system know already, and that is that a lot of our children actually move between these schools. One year, they might be in a neighborhood school. Six months later, they might bounce over to a private school. Two years later, they might end up in a charter school. So it looked, you know, it was obvious to us, to our panel or our committee that we deliberately looked across the breadth of our education system here. And so these recommendations and what we talk about here apply to all of that. So in other words, if we say we need more communication, that doesn't, that's not a poke at Rich or the school district. That's a comment and a recommendation across the entire county. You can just assume it involves these three types of schools. So we know there are a lot of things out there and people that get passionate about one or the other of these, but we really did focus across the breadth of it. So from a construct perspective, we kind of looked at this as... a construct perspective, we, we kind of looked at this as, as, you know, any adverse event is having really kind of three, three segments of that. You have a prevention phase, something bad happens, you have a response, and then on the backside of that, you have recovery. And recovery, for us, we kind of looked at in that immediate recovery aspect, from a mental health perspective, that's, that recovery goes years and years and years, right? And ultimately, you end up with some form of a life cycle. But what was important to us is that, I think as a society, we tend to focus a lot of our effort on the response phase. And maybe we'll get better at the social-emotional phase, right, that we've heard about tonight. I think you'll hear some overlapping recommendations, if you will, that I think will help the Board of Commissioners kind of focus along with the community. So, we wanted to also look for transform, transformational opportunities in the prevention phase. And the point with that is, if we do a significant job in the prevention phase, I don't have to worry so much about what's happening in, inside the school, because I'm going to keep the person that's going to, plans harm, I'm going to keep them outside of the school. I'm going to keep them off school property. So, hopefully that gives a little context of where we were from a, an approach perspective. The other aspect of that is, if you see this blue area out here, from a safety and security perspective, you look at things in, or I tend to look at them from a concentric ring perspective or layered approach, right? So, we have a depiction here of a, of a city. The blue area is a specific area. As you get closer to a school here in the center, you have different layers of safety or security, if you will. So, you can see as those things build, obviously, the better we are at keeping somebody off property, the safer our kids are. If they, regardless of whether they are supposed to be there or not, if we understand what their mental state is, their social, emotional, emotional-type issues are, then hopefully, the appropriate people can intervene. And we've, we've heard a lot about that CRT, you know, capabilities and so forth. But that's another kind of contextual aspect of, of how we looked at this. So, research and review, I think there was some concern early on that, that there may not be an awful lot of research associated with what we've done. My guess is we've probably read through a couple thousand pages of information. What's sitting up here on the desk is literally about a third of it. So, when it comes to informing our results, and, and as Rich Payne mentioned, you know, best practices, I can assure you through, through the multiple FBI reports and Secret Service reports and Department of Homeland Security reports, there was a great deal of research that went into our recommendations in a very short amount of time. Additionally, we did some site visits. We went to three neighborhood schools, elementary, middle, and high school. We also visited a charter school and a private school. So, we needed that, that understanding as a baseline for where are we in the district? Now, we didn't hit every school, so we didn't get a ubiquitous, you know, view, but we, we got a good snapshot of where things are, aren't. We've researched best practices. We've, we've done interviews. Stephen and I have had multiple phone calls back to DC and Department of Homeland Security. We've also had interviews with, with, with different entities, the Board of Education in Florida, to see what type of legislation came out of the state after the Parkland shooting. So, there, there are a number of interviews there as well. We've had presentations provided to us, and then public input. So, obviously, I think, as you well know, the public may not, we, the county established a website that has probably nine or 10 volumes now of input from citizens of the county. And by golly, we read every stink in one of those things. So, there wasn't a, there wasn't a circumstance where we just said, "Oh, that doesn't matter," or "That one looks like, that's five pages. I don't have time." We literally read through every one of them. We've also, through some parents and family members of STEM, we've received some input as well. So, a couple of Kendrick's friends that happened to be there that day, we also have input from them as well that kind of informs our, our decisions here. So, now we'll get into some of the recommendations once again. It'll kind of be at the, at the wave top levels. An overarching theme to walk away from here is, is really consistency, right? So, if I look at the school district, if I look at charter schools which funnel through the school district, or if I look at private schools, you know, back on the 13th, I stood at this podium, podium, and I talked about an integrated effort and consistency, right? So, if you're, if you're an emergency responder that we have here, and you're rushing into a school, it doesn't matter, we've established it doesn't matter what type of school. What does matter is what's their infrastructure? Do they have a common response protocol that they use? Do they have common training, right? Do they have common radios and so forth? So, commonality is a, is a very significant thing. I think this is where we'll see, you'll end up seeing recommendations throughout this discussion that really get to that commonality in getting to a common minimum standard. We recognize that the county and the school district doesn't control private schools, but I'm pretty confident if, if they are handed a set of recommendations that says, "Hey, you may be here. That's great," or "Maybe you're here," a common benchmark or watermark across the county, regardless of school, is what we're headed for. So, that's the emergency management plans, that consistent response protocol. From a training perspective, I kind of look at it, right, no, no politics here. If you, if you are in a school and you carry a weapon and the school is your duty station, you ought to have the same training. You ought to have the same communication, right? So, that goes for the sheriffs, folks, the municipalities, Rich's team, charter schools have a hired gun, you name it. It goes for all of them. And what I, what we really mean is, there's, there are unique and special training capabilities within our own county. Everybody ought to go to that. Everybody ought to train together. Rich's team, Jack's teams, Holly's team. We just want to make sure it's consistent. That way, if there's an emergency, when, when they come to the door, they know who's working there and how they've been trained. It's just common sense. Communication's the same thing. You'll see some more on that. Entry control, you know, obviously, you don't want just a circumstance where anybody and everybody can just come and go. So, once again, that's a common theme or a common standard. So, some, some schools have entry control at, at that level, and some have it at that level. We want to have, we want to bring those to a common, a commonality, and there are some details on that. Parking and barriers, once again, many, if not all of our schools have those, right? We're probably saying, "Do more," right? So, not, not, not too complicated. Building envelopes, the same thing, and surveillance systems. We'll get into some more of this, but in general terms, if, if I have a school here with X camera system and, and a bunch of schools over here with Y, I want them to be on the same system, because the more that we can share data, the more that law enforcement can get a consistent feed, whether they're going to one of Rich's schools, or whether they're going to a private school, the better we are, the safer we are. Assessments, to my surprise, basically, given that Stephen's on the team, we learned some pretty important things relative to assessments. One of those was that the Department of Homeland Security does, our tax dollars already pay for assessments, and they have a fantastic one. So, they've got a, I'll call it a smart spreadsheet, if you will, as long, as well as a manual. And that spreadsheet has a number of questions. You walk through those questions. It gives you a quantitative result on the back end. It doesn't cost us anything, or it's cost, it costs us our tax dollars, right? So, from an assessment perspective, we think that, once again, if you fit into a school category, that utilizing that assessment, assessment at every school would make a huge difference. Once again, it's consistency across the entire county. Our, our schools are doing those assessments. The other big thing while, while we're talking about this that I want people to walk away with is that our schools are safe. A lot of our recommendations, we already know, are in kind of overlap or concert with where a lot of schools are today. They're on a path. So, we didn't find these large gaping holes in what we've looked at. What we did find is where we can be more deliberate at our consistency across the county. And, and as you can imagine, with the number of schools we have, it varies. So, our recommendation here is that it's, it's third-party and independent. Quite frankly, my answer to that is this DHS program. They have already agreed to come to our county and do train the trainer and assess a certain number of our schools at large, and then help those schools continue that training. And then on a subsequent yearly basis, they'll come in and review and say somebody changed out their entire camera system, which we hope so that they're integrated. They'll come back in and review that with, with the school, maybe a private school. So, those are big. The independent piece is important to me because fortunately or unfortunately, now school security is probably, I think it's like a $5 billion a year industry almost overnight. And sometimes you just don't know who's walking in the door selling you an assessment. What I do know is if it's from DHS, it's a good assessment. The operative thing here is commonality. Doesn't have to be the best. Doesn't have to be the best response protocol. What's, what wins the day is consistency. Integrated data sharing, as we've also learned, and certainly many people heard on the news relative to the Parkland shooting, you know, the federal law enforcement guys had, knew this student, right, multiple times. They'd made visits. Local law enforcement knew this student multiple times. They'd made visits. I think this dovetails a little bit with what the mental health folks were thinking about. And so, the state of Florida legislated a, I'll call it a data sharing capability. And we think this is a great place that, that, that not only the county should pick up, but the state. But the point with this is allowing an interface, an interactive interface where folks can go in and, and our local law enforcement and so forth can share, share, share data. Social media. This really gets at the fact that many times in, in our community, people are sharing a lot of things on social media. One of the studies that we reviewed was called the bystander study. It was a Secret Service and FBI study. And it was a study of 47 school shootings. And out of those 47 school shootings, 81% of the time, there was a second individual that was aware of the shooting, and they chose not to say something. Now, I would argue that it's probably closer to 90-plus percent. These were folks trying to go back and do interviews 20 years later, which they probably had a hard time doing. But what's hard for us to understand, or for me to get my head wrapped around, is how would you know something, some travesty was about to occur and you don't, didn't say anything? And so, we look at that as, as a, as a culture issue, right, and as a climate issue in our school systems and our community. So, much to, I think, what the mental health team was pulling on, how do we measure culture? How do we shift culture towards a healthy place, right? How do we ensure that when there's a student that knows something, that they actually say something, that they feel safe that they can say something, and they feel compelled to say something? And I think even, even in recent incidents, right, where students may not have, have felt that love or desire for their school at different levels, that changes their interest in saying something. So, social media, I think, plays a great role in that. There are capabilities out there. There are lots of folks that look at sentiment and what people are saying. And due to some of my other relationships, we're aware of capabilities that actually look at the influencers in those communities, right? This is not targeting an individual. This is a capability where legally, you can set search criteria, and you can identify groups of people that are talking about things like mass shootings or school shootings. And an analyst can then dig into that, and then law enforcement can respond and find out what's going on. I think that's a significant component of this that's very transformative, and that hits that preventative phase. Community participation, I think we've heard about this some tonight as well. This is really a community problem. This isn't a school district problem, or a Castle Rock PD problem, or a Sheriff's Department problem. This is a community problem, right? So, this is, this is a leadership issue. We have to make bold decisions and then hold people accountable. This is a parent issue, right, and a student issue, and a guy that, you know, just thinks that one person at a time can make a difference. So, public service, public, public service announcements, I think, help us get a long way with that. A lot of parents are just super busy, right? They can't necessarily come, I mean, we have a lot of parents in the county that don't, they don't even understand when, when a protocol gets enacted. They don't even know what that means. So, we were going to show a brief clip here of an example. I'll probably cut it off just, just due to time, but, because I think it was seven minutes. But this is an existing example of, of a public safety.
There are things the adults don't like to talk about, but if things happen at school, I need to have a plan. And I need to know that the adults have a plan. So, I'm going to talk about the standard response protocol. It's all about these simple actions. Lockout, get inside, lock outside doors. What about lockdown? Evacuate. Sometimes a location may be announced. Shelter. The hazard and the safety strategy will be announced. And hold. In the classroom, clear the hallways.
I'm James. I'm a school resource officer. Lockouts are easy most of the time, like this.
Students, get inside, lock outside doors. This is a lockout. Get inside, lock outside doors. This is a lockout.
Kids, get inside, hustle.
Why are we doing it?
We're doing this because something is happening in the neighborhood near the school, and we have to get you guys inside. Could be crimes out there, could be riots, could be a dangerous animal, could be zombies.
James, zombies aren't real.
You don't know that.
Here's what happens. Get everyone inside. But inside, you just keep everything normal. Even class changes stay on schedule, except between buildings.
Initially, nobody can come in or go out of the building.
Depending on what's happening, your teacher may ask you to text your parents and tell them not to freak out. School is happening just like normal. And if they show up, they probably won't be let in anyway.
That's right. Nothing to see here.
Chill. It's just a lockout. No drama.
Sometimes it's a pain, like when school gets out or during lunch.
So, we think that whether it's a marketing campaign, public service announcements, use of social media, there's a great opportunity, right, to, to get the word out and, and reach more people in the community. And quite frankly, it, it doesn't matter if we're, we're speaking to folks with kids in schools or not, right? Once again, this is, this is a, a community issue. Volunteer programs, there are a couple of out there, a couple out there. We, we certainly had a number of comments from the public on that, and you heard some right here in some of those first meetings that you had. So, one of, one of the recommendations is to maybe look at specific existing programs, maybe create something that works specifically well for Douglas County, but basically tailored to fit the county, right? You, you, some instances, we, we don't want someone that's a, a, in that program feels like, "Oh, I can just go to anybody's school and walk through the door because I'm part of the program." So, it needs to be tailored. But, but basically utilize those, these resources that we have in the county of grandparents and dads and moms that have some free time. Once again, it's part of building community as well. School culture, we talked about this a little bit. I mean, we really need to get back to a "we" mindset instead of a "me" mindset, right? I mean, I think we, we all, any of us that have children know how, how things kind of go that direction, especially with social media and what we get on phones today. So, I think this is really a, a, a big culture side of the house. I think the, the programs that were mentioned earlier, we did find evidence, if you will, of, of some of those culture efforts or, or tools being used to identify existing culture and then try to create a plan to shift a culture a particular direction. And UC Boulder has some great programs there, so we agree with, with, with what the other committee was, was saying. Obviously, once again, it needs to be consistent across the community. You don't want to have 90-plus schools and, and implement 10 different culture assessments, right? And then obviously, the important part of that is, is that you're going to go through and actually create a plan to go drive that culture towards, towards goodness. Student empowerment, I think, I think what, what Kendrick demonstrated was empowerment, just plain and simple, right? He wasn't a victim, so to speak. He, he chose to take charge and to do something in his setting. It's, it's heartbreaking that he had to be the one that did that. But student empowerment is a significant thing to me and to the committee in this. And what we're really pulling on is, how do you get students involved? How do you break the barrier of that culture? that culture where they don't feel like they want to say something? Or maybe they're frustrated at someone, so they won't say something. Some of this is a little bit tangential towards a direct empowerment thing. But, life skills relative to life-saving first aid, social skills, that's really social and mental skills and development. Situational awareness, right? One of the things that's always crazy to me is my 15-year-old, I mean, if he's standing here, he'll knock anything off the counter, right, because he's just not paying attention to his surroundings. You know, I remember somebody laughing. I remember back in the 80s when you heard a ton in the media about ladies in particular, right, in violence prevention, right? And if you're in the, if you're walking to your car in a parking lot, pay attention to what's going on around you, right? I don't, we don't hear that anymore. So, part of this is, part of what we're talking about here is just helping to train kids on situational awareness, right? And so, as we do that, we're building life skills in these students and empowering these students. The other part of that is crisis response mindset, which is really getting at, look, if something happens, like my little ones, I always taught them, hey, if you fall down on your bike in the middle of the road, guess what? I don't care how hurt you are, you got to get out of the middle of the road. You're going to get hit by a car. So, part of this is, how do you respond in a crisis? So, that student empowerment, I think, is fairly significant. And I think the esteemed folks that spoke earlier would also agree with that. There are some policy opportunities, or maybe some policy things that would have to occur. Modified closed campus. We say modified because closed campus means something very specific to, say, the school district, and maybe something significantly different to a private school. We recognize the fact that the definition of closed campus to the school district is a very significant thing, potentially a very costly thing. And so, what we're really, we're saying modified because when students come and go all day from school, I mean, and the same student may come to school and leave three or four times. Number one, just me personally, I don't understand how that helps their education. But, number two, that's a significant safety risk, right? We saw in the STEM shooting where they came and left multiple times, right? It's in the police report. They even visited another school in the county, which is dangerous as well. So, if it's, you know, the students won't like this, right? But, if it's, you don't get to go to Chick-fil-A at lunchtime, I'm okay with that, if it makes our school safer, and I think a lot of families will be as well. So, in essence, if you run a charter school, if you run a school district, if you run a private school, we think modifying how students come and go will be helpful. We talked about developing consistent security protocols for all the schools and emergency action plans. I think I've touched on that. We won't get that again. School site security. We talked about this a little bit, but, you know, we have a handful of SROs. What's the number up to now?
Over 40.
Okay, over 40. You know, there, I think Rich has mentioned previously what that statistic or the ratio is from NASRA. I think it's 1 to 1,000. Is that right, Rich? Yeah. To be honest with you, you know, from a former military guy's perspective, I hate those odds. You know, I put one SRO in a building, it's 50,000 square feet or so, that guy or gal's going to have to be way luckier than good, right? So, I just look at this from the aspect of, if we think SROs are good, let's do more. If we think they're good, let's do highly-trained individuals that can support them. Once again, it revolves around what's the appropriate certification and capability of that individual if they have a gun. The other part of that is what's the appropriate training. So, that consistency matters. Physical security from an exterior perspective. Once again, this goes ubiquitously across the community here. Obviously, limiting and securing access. And what I really pulling on there, it's kind of obvious, right? If you got 10 doors, don't use 10 doors all the time. Let's change how that, how we look at that in our society. Secured access is just that. If we have a single entry point, we want that to be secured and some type of process or protocol that's used in that area. Perimeter protection, you know, frequently, we see around the schools that there are ballards or those type of things, right? I think, I think we should just do more of that, right? So, probably assessing every school in the county as to, how easy is it for a vehicle to access a building is not a bad thing to investigate. Interior reinforcement. Basically, you know, that pulls on things like making sure that if we have a safe space in a classroom for a student, that it's actually safe, right? I'm not saying that they're not already. I'm just saying that's a best practice. Let's make sure we're doing that across the entire county. Reinforced structures, that kind of gets at the same thing. But, we've seen across prior school shootings where, you know, an individual tried to shoot through a window when all they had to do is reach in the window and open the door. So, we want to make sure that inside our buildings as well, that those things are done if they're not done. Once again, not stating that they aren't done, but it's a best practice. Communications. Really, it's radio interoperability. If Rich was up here, what he'd tell you is that he got a pretty sizable grant from the 911 board, and they have outfitted all the district schools as well as charter schools, so they have the radios to outfit them. There are a handful of schools that have not received those yet, just to do to roll out in training. But, what that allows us to do is have that interoperability between a school district or a private school back to law enforcement. So, as an example, I don't know what this looks like, but my guess is, private schools did not have the opportunity. Now, if they went out and purchased them themselves, they would have it. That needs to be assessed. Once again, it's having that common communication across the system. What you see here is a school, an administrative building, a fire department, and a police department. From an interoperability perspective, and then the other part of this is, you can see in the teachers' hands, little phones. Part of this is, as you, as you look at that concentric ring of communication from miles away from the school, all the way into the school, we want to make sure that literally every teacher has some way to communicate. Now, cell phones are ubiquitous. So, part of that, part of what makes sense there to us is some type of application from an alerting system perspective, as well as a communication perspective. And there are numerous apps out there. We've, you know, we've run across a few brochures here and there, and certainly didn't have a lot of time to look into them, but some of them seem certainly viable. The other part of that, too, is our communication with our video surveillance, right? So, we want to ensure that, number one, that there's consistency. So, if maybe a private school was stood up and went and purchased the best thing that Costco had for security cameras, well, it'd be very difficult to take those cameras and integrate that into a law enforcement vehicle. So, we want consistency across the entire county, right? The school district's doing a great job with their cameras. They're doing upgrades as we speak, and they're transitioning and have a capability where they're monitoring all those cameras. I think there's an opportunity where we look at charter schools a similar way and private schools, right? Obviously, we don't, we can only recommend to those guys. But, the intent is that if now, all of a sudden, there's something going on at a school, that that gets back to a data center, and it actually ends up in the, right on the computer inside law enforcement's car as well. Those type of things used to exist in the county. Over time, with data updates and system updates, you tend to lose those connections, and it costs, you know, it takes funding to maintain those connections. So, part of what we're advocating here is that we redo those connections and get better at, or more consistent from that perspective. Training the community. Really, we're pulling on that regardless of which seat you sit in, we need to do training in an integrated level across the entire community. And so, as an example, I'll use STEM. I don't know how accurate the number is, but I've heard that there were well over 300 vehicles at STEM. What that tells me is that those involved had their heart in the right place. What that also tells me is that we have to work better as a community to manage those type of things. My friend here, Stephen, Department of Homeland Security, had 20 people show up. That's pretty awesome in my book. What would change the way, what would change that outcome relative to those 300 cars is integrated training. So, at some level, at some reoccurring basis, the committee's recommending that we're training from students all the way up to the federal law enforcement and everybody in between. And quite frankly, the more we can get parents involved, the better. The more our parents are involved, the better everything's going to be with our students. Same goes for onsite training. Really, we're just saying it's consistency of training and response. You saw a little video there, standard response protocol. The district is using that ubiquitously across their system. I believe most, if not all, the charter schools are using that. I can't tell you whether or not our private schools are using that yet. But, what I would say is unequivocally, we need to use it. We need to use it everywhere. And I'm not advocating for SRP. What I'm advocating is, use, pick one and use it. Technologies. We did take a little bit of time and looked at different technologies, right? Some things came through the portal. Some things came from Florida Board of Education, right? Oh, you know, like, hey, tell us about this, right? So, we didn't have any industry representatives come brief us on things. But, what we did do is say, hey, if you're part of the Board of Education of Florida, tell us about your system, why you chose your system, and how you think it works for you, so that we would have some understanding. There are legacy systems, like I mentioned, within the school system here where maybe it's a camera system that's outdated and it's being updated. So, I think there are also some emerging opportunities relative to this data sharing capability and so forth. So, we did spend a little time looking at that. In conclusion, I think this is, you know, hopefully, we sent a message here that we just want to be consistent, right? We don't have to argue over what the specific implementation is or the specific solution set is. What I would argue is, what's more important is, let's just do the same thing. So, the school district already has a ton of these expensive radios that talk straight to law enforcement and talk straight to a school district ops center. We got to use those everywhere. I think if we don't have existing funding already mapped out for private schools, then that's a pretty straightforward place to go make an investment, and it doesn't take long to do that. We have to be on the same tune of music as a community. I want to say that I think there's a high baseline across the county as far as the safety in our schools. I recognize that we've had a significant tragic event here, and my heart breaks over that. I would be even more remorse today if I left, leaving anybody in this room, or anybody at the end of that feed, to think that it's unsafe to go to school, right? I think that's a very important thing for our community to understand. And I don't think there's a person on this board or on this committee that thinks that it's not safe to go to school. So, I want to make sure that message is loud and clear. We always need to do better. We're going to do better. We've got to do this as a community. We have some things that we will be briefing the Board of Commissioners on that are somewhat immediate opportunities to implement, that, as Mr. Castillo mentioned, are not just low-hanging fruit, but dropping fruit, right? There's some stuff here that's pretty straightforward. We certainly stand ready to continue to support. What I will say in somewhat of a closing remark is that I think the safety of our children and our community and our county is a choice. It's that simple. It's a choice of our leadership. It's a choice of our parents, right? It's a choice of people that don't even have children. It's a choice of our students. The point is, we can make that decision. I'm grateful for what the commissioners have done to find some funds to work on that. It's bigger than the commissioners. It's bigger than this Board of Commissioners. It is our community. So, my parting words, and I hope is a call to action, is, what choice will the community make? And thank you guys very much for the opportunity to do my part to help.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey.
Each of us have a few remarks, but I think what we had said, very similar comments would come to this committee from what we said to the mental health committee. So, we're in deep gratitude, no doubt, for the many hours, and even these hours this evening. So, the committee chairs, all committee members, and the county staff that supported you, your speed and shared compassion for this community is noteworthy. We are grateful and look forward to our future discussions as this process moves forward. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. Two and a half years, I should know better. Clint said something just before he sat down that says, this is bigger than the commissioners. And there is something at work here bigger than all of us, because for the commissioners to have come up with this $10 million is bigger than all of us. None of us knew Clint two months ago, yet somehow, God brought Clint to us and pulled this really complicated committee together. And I got a text message from somebody yesterday telling me that he felt God's hand at work, and that we are going to solve this. So, I would just like to commend all of you for the progress that you have made, and the collaborative outcomes that you have achieved. More than anything, we are grateful for the message that this sends to the families of Douglas County, that change is coming, and it will make a positive difference for our children. Thank you.
Clint, to you and each member of the Physical School Safety Committee, we are incredibly indebted to each and every one of you in this community, is indebted to you for your hours of service, for your passion. I sit here inspired, awed, and encouraged by what has occurred this evening, and I know it's just the beginning. So, my thanks go to each of you, but I also want to extend a special thanks and a special gratitude to both of my fellow commissioners. I'm the new commissioner, and I sit here as a dad. My wife and my kids are in the back. And these two have demonstrated to me what a beacon on the hill truly looks like, and what leadership is in Douglas County. So, thank you to both of you and to this committee. From progress made to add additional SROs to the creation of the state's first youth community response team, to the recommendations that we have heard from two committees tonight, I believe we've delivered on our promise that those whose loved ones enter a new school year will do so knowing that something has changed and that more is on the way. Thank you.
Mr. Layden, I echo those words. It was really a privilege and an honor to work with both you, and certainly the highly-qualified staff we have, the committee members, the subject matter experts who've just been phenomenal. And really, it's a privilege for all of us to serve you, the community. We really take that as a serious mandate that our job is to serve you, and to make sure that you feel safe in your community. So, with that, we thank all of you for attending tonight. Again, this is the beginning process of many steps to come. But, as we have seen, we want to expedite this process, but we want to do it in the right way. We thank you. And this concludes our work session.